Good.
That's going backwards.
Oh, I bet. Yeah, I feel bad for those guys. Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, done it. Morning, Bill. Did you get a new jacket for Christmas?
I guess.
He's just gonna say Willie.
Just not slick Willie.
Slick, yeah, no kidding. Maybe he'll say Free Willie.
Hi, Willie.
Nothing free about them.
Okay, ready? Okay, it is nine o'clock and it's time in our schedule for our weekly business meeting. And if you all stand with me, Janine Shepherd can open us up.
All right, would you pray with me? Almighty God, we come to you and we ask for your blessing to be on this meeting today. Please give the commissioners wisdom for dealing with issues today and for decisions that will need to be made. We pray that you help the commissioners in their marriages, helping them to be strong husbands and lead their families well. Bless their families and help them to be strong fathers. Give them good health and healing of anything that is out of alignment with your perfect will, Lord. Help their bodies to be healed and whole. I pray that all of us present would have a deep longing for you, Lord, and that the Lord's power and anointing would be upon us, that we would be mighty and bold in declaring your gospel. Ephesians 3:16 through 19 says, "I pray that out of his glorious riches, he may strengthen you with power through his spirit in your inner being, so that Christ may dwell in your hearts through faith. And I pray that you, being rooted and established in love, may have power, together with all the Lord's holy people, to grasp how wide and long and high and deep is the love of Christ, and to know that this love surpasses knowledge, that you may be filled to the measure of all the fullness of God."
Amen. You can follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Steve, looks like you're up first.
All right.
Thanks, Janine. You too.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Now it's time for public comment, and as we've been stating that this is, you've got three minutes to speak. The commissioners will not engage in debate. Just say your three minutes and away we go. So first one is Dan Rose.
Morning, I'm Mr. Commissioners, Chairman McDonald. I sent in a request this morning for a public agenda item addition under the authority of Title 1-200 county ordinance. Specifically, it states that this is the time that we have to request for a future agenda item meeting. I request it to be scheduled for a Tuesday AM as the ordinance states, and not a workshop or some other place where the discussion can be hidden from the public. That was sent this morning. I believe Jesse may have received it. It was sent to her and the Commissioner McDonald. And that is on the subject matter of the MOU lease agreement and the items around the creation of that MOU lease agreement. And there's four items within that request for discussion decision. And I ask that you honor that request. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Dan. Next one is Asia.
Asia Williams in Blanchard, I have submitted on December 15th two requests for resolution review for the commissioners regarding ARPA money. Commissioners continue to tell us that we're not spending ARPA money, but as of today, we're up to about $500,000 in ARPA money that has been spent. It's not accurate to continue to tell the public that we will not and are not spending ARPA money. My request, I'll submit the same Title 1-200 today requesting that it officially be put on the agenda because after sending it on December 15th, commissioners have not put this on the agenda. We are specifically requesting that the money that was administered or dispersed from the ARPA fund go back into the EMS fund and spend the money that we have. County clerk has already explained to commissioners that we have the money available to spend out of our own budget without touching ARPA money. You're playing a game with our civil liberties while you verbally tell us you agree with not spending ARPA money. You continue to approve ARPA money spending. Today, there is a batch audit of money that is going to come again out of EMS budget from the ARPA line of almost $200,000, which will bring that up to $500,000. So I'm again requesting that the commissioners not just say they agree with not spending, but actually actively stop the risking of our civil liberties by spending ARPA money.
Okay, thanks, Asia. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this morning? Seeing none, we'll move along. Consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information for us, I move to approve consent agenda as presented. I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Doug?
There's a solid waste over 5K. I was wondering what that is specifically?
Yeah, it's perchloride. It's a $6,600 or $67.
Oh. Lot of that's being used in the...
We don't want people slipping around. Anyway, any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Let's move along to clerk's office. Looks like it's gonna be nasty today. You say you don't look like Mike.
I'm not tall enough.
Not vanilla thunder.
Nancy Twain, I'm comptroller for the clerk's office. And the first action item is fiscal year '22, claims batch number six for $294,053.20 and demands batch six in the amount of $173,979.10, totaling $468,032.30.
Yep, thanks, Nancy.
I move to approve payment of FY '22 claims and demands in batch number six totaling $468,032.30.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Doug?
Doug Patterson, for the record, the demands. Can you say what the large items are and the demands?
Yes, $130,000 is for medical and pharmacy as far as that. The other is fuel and postage are the larger items.
Fuel, there's no arrangements to pay that on an ongoing. Thank you.
Fuel for Roden Bridge at the D3 shop, so that's probably more of a discussion with Roden Bridge.
Yeah, it just kind of surprises me that that wouldn't be arranged, be paid on an on, you know, end of the month.
The arrangement though is that we have, if it's not paid by a certain date, they will shut off the fuel cards for everybody. There is no fans or buts. We've had that happen by trying to put it in a regular claims batch.
That's why it's more like a credit card.
It's kind of like our credit cards or our Home Depot.
Because it's a fuel card.
I understand. Thanks.
Okay, any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Go with Nancy, item two.
Item two, EMS fiscal year '22 claims batch for $222,510. And no demands for a total batch of $222,510.44.
Thanks, Nancy.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY '22 EMS claims in the batch number six totaling $222,510.44. Second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Let's go with Maureen. Maureen is up first.
Doug Patterson, for the record, be right there.
Wow. Someone's gonna be sleeping on the gout tonight.
Again. So is any of this money that is being spent in this $22,000, which is $220,000, excuse me, ARPA money?
I know that $145,000 of that are for life packs for EMS. So the discussion of whether it comes out of that line item, I think I discussed before that everything would be coded there. Whether we use those ARPA funds or not is the decision for the commissioner.
And I understand that this is a standing bill and but if, if this is going ARPA money, you know, we need to make a decision of whether we're spending that before it becomes clear from legal and other court cases whether this is endangering our county and our county citizens from federal demand. And as was stated earlier, this needs to get dealt with.
Maureen Patterson, for the record, just wanted to add, I respectfully request that you not pass this EMS claims batch money because it is, it is ARPA funds. Thanks.
Okay, Asia, you want a shot at this? Okay, go ahead, Dan.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Can we get a confirmation from the clerk's office here that ARPA money is not being used for any of this $222,000? Affirmative, is not being used.
Okay, any other question or comment? Yeah, she's already, she's, she's already responded to that, so.
I don't think it was clear to me.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do you have any, anything more you want to add?
I mean, this was an agenda item that was already approved, that approved it. The life packs were already on another agenda item in a previous meeting. This is the bill to claim. They already have the goods.
Right. Yeah, we have to pay the bill.
Terry Barlow, for the record. All she said was that it was up to you guys to decide whether or not it was going to be ARPA funds. So is it going to be ARPA funds?
We don't know yet. We're still waiting for that, for that legal opinion. Go ahead, Asia. You can be more like Doug, just jump up.
Yeah, I checked with the clerk's office before I came here, and that is coming out of the ARPA line. You guys have already decided that the life pack payment is coming out of ARPA. That's the whole reason I'm revisiting the fact that you guys are spending money out of that line. And so it's not, it's disingenuous to make it clear as mud that it's not coming out of it. We're spending the money. Some people continue to say that we can pay that money back, but we are spending the money. And I don't think it's reasonable for elected officials to pretend that you are not approving that that line be spent out of ARPA money. Currently, we're up to about $500,000, and I confirmed that with the county clerk before I came here to make sure I knew which line it was because every time we come here, it's clear as mud when you guys say, I don't know which line it's going to be spent out of. We do know. It's up to $500,000 of ARPA money that you're spending on the EMS budget. So the question is, we have the money, can we still pay that but out of our own money instead of ARPA money? You guys can make that decision. We have the money. There's no dispute. Just stop spending out of that line. It's not just an accounting issue.
It is an accounting issue because if legal comes back and says that we are well within our rights to spend the ARPA money, I'm not going to go through hundreds of line items to try and figure out what is ARPA and what is not. I think I stated this in a previous meeting that we are going to continue to code to that line until which time a decision is made by legal. And then if legal says we're not going to spend the money, we will disperse it or reclass it to the correct line item within the financials.
It's just an accounting issue.
It's not just an accounting issue. So then why do you deny the request for the workshop? Because that's not what's happening.
The request. We've been very succinct in saying that once we get a legal opinion, then we will have the workshop. We have not yet gotten a legal opinion.
But actually, I have agreed to, you know, workshop, and I don't think that, you know, it's just a matter of meeting with constituents, you know, that you choose to bring and, you know, we'll have an attorney there and we'll talk about all the things that, you know, that are worrying you and hopefully we'll have a better representation of what we, what we really have. I, I have similar heartburn on this stuff. I mean, I, I've stated in the other meetings that, you know, but she also explains that this, I talked to her yesterday and she's like, these are coded to the line that as long as we have these funds, then we don't have a concern because we can cover it with these funds.
Now, say that again. So long as we have these funds, we can cover what we spent out of ARPA, but we still spend it out of ARPA. We're just going to switch the lines. I get it for her accounting reason, but we're still taking money out of that line that we're just saying we're going to put it back in if we decide we don't want to spend it.
Yeah, I know. I don't agree with you that there's different ways to approach this.
If, if we decided at that time to write a check out of EMS and put it back in the ARPA funds, which is what I believe you guys are pushing for, and after legal has said that it is our opinion, that's, that is what's going to happen. But for a reporting purpose that comes up in April, if nothing is decided and these monies have been spent, I need to be able to trace these easily. And that's why it's just being coded to that line. If, at the end of the day, we decide to put the money back into ARPA and legal says we're not going to spend anymore, those items would be reclassed out of that COV or ARPA line into medical supplies, fixed assets, capital equipment. This is for my tracking purposes.
Terry Barlow, for the record, I would say moving forward, you guys need to come up with a better system than give and take. Set some money aside in a bucket somewhere that you got instead of having to go use ARPA money and then pay it back. That's stupid. You know, you guys should be able to figure out how to do this instead of using ARPA money at all.
It's not that stupid when you look at the larger picture. So we're trying to get out of the EMS station we're in downtown because it costs about $10,000 a month. Costs you $10,000 a month. We're trying to build a facility here that you can drive through as opposed to when we back into, which creates additional damage. We have money set aside for that. If we start tapping into that, then we're going to be stuck in this facility downtown that's completely inadequate for what we're doing as far as life safety issues go and affect the performance and the cost to the taxpayer. So once we get a definitive answer from legal, and if they say, hey, no, we definitely don't want to take this money, then we will go ahead and bite the bullet at that time. But it does, it's not prudent to go ahead and have a knee-jerk reaction to something until we get a legal definition of it, a legal opinion on it. At that time, if it's, if it's negative, we will pay it back and we'll just have to figure out another way to fund this EMS facility. And then you'll have to continue to pay for the other one until then. But if not, then it's taxpayer money. The feds don't have any money that they don't take from us. So if you want to be taxed twice, we can do that.
Okay, I'm talking about moving forward.
Right. We're not, we're not using any more money moving forward. This money was allocated back months ago. Materials were ordered, the life packs were ordered. They're a lifesaving device. They're here, we have to pay for them. Now, push come to shove, and we get a legal opinion back from our attorney here in the next month or so before April, then we have to move it. We can move it. All it is right now is it's just a journal entry.
Hi, Tricia Bullen, for the record. Who is legal that's deciding this?
Well, we've got it. It'll be somebody from the prosecutor's office.
Do we have any?
You've got an outside consultant working on it. It was Scott Bauer, but now I think it might be Bill. Bill's just getting kind of briefed in on this. We've got an outside consultant that's actually working with a number of different counties on this same issue. They're one of the top accounting firms in the world, and they're the one who were, who is helping us develop a strategy here to find out, you know, what's, what it actually means. I mean, there's already been one opinion come out of the state saying that it doesn't include any presidential executive orders. Only executive orders that were contained within the, within the terms and conditions itself. And so we're trying to vet that out because it doesn't say specifically presidential executive orders, says executive orders contained. So.
What's Bill's last name?
Wilson.
My name is Bill Wilson.
Wilson, okay, so it's you. Okay. And what's the deadline? Is there one? Did you guys set it in line for when?
We're waiting for the information to come back from this. I can't remember the name.
Ernst and Young.
Ernst and Young.
Can I hop in real quick? So this is, this is a collaborative effort. This isn't something that we can decide overnight or we want to give a good, well-reasoned opinion. So my colleague Scott Bauer is also working on this with, with me. When, when the answer is ready, it's ready. But I, I realize that it's important that we have that done sooner rather than later. But this is something that we need to take a long, hard look at, and we're doing that. So we promise we are going to take, when that's done, the answer will be here. Until then, until we have that conclusive answer, we we just don't have it yet.
And regardless of some people's opinion, we are very concerned as a board as well. That's why we're going through all this process, and it's costing us some money to do it.
What would your estimate be if one maybe would have an answer?
I'm not going to commit to a timeline, and when it's done, it's done.
Are you insulting, consulting other AGs like, we say Texas or some of the other counties that are refusing the money?
So our internal deliberations, like all that stuff, this, this is work we do to create an attorney-client privileged document that they can release if they want to. I'm really not going to, I'm not comfortable disclosing any of our internal deliberations or research methodologies that we're going to use. It'd be up to the board when we issue an opinion whether or not they want to share that with everybody and waive that privilege, but this is actually a legal opinion. So that would be up to them at that point. So I'm just not going to get into those details.
Okay, thank you.
Maureen Patterson, for the record, I just wanted to say it is prudent to live within your means.
We are.
Okay.
You do every year.
Nonetheless, ARPA money is printed money, and you're supporting that process of printing, just printing money.
I don't know that we've supported it. I don't remember talking to the president.
When you spend the money, you support it. There's two deadlines here.
Doug, we've had this discussion about all federal money. It all comes from us. Whether it's printed or not, we're going to pay it.
Doug Patterson, for the record.
Sorry.
So, so one deadline is April when you have to report to ARPA the money that you've spent. The other deadline is when you've spent more money than your cash reserves to be able to pay back.
But we aren't doing that, and we won't do that. We've already given you that assurance. We will not do that. We've said that repeatedly. Pardon? Well, no, no, because, okay, Asia, this is, this is a, Asia, this is a commissioners meeting? Okay, I'm the chairman. We're in charge of this meeting. I'm in charge of the structure of this meeting and the flow of this meeting. So here's the problem is we've answered, this question's been asked repeatedly by Doug. It's been answered repeatedly by us. We are not spending any further money other than what we already committed to. We have more than enough money in EMS to pay that back. That should put this issue to bed.
It should. I've heard other, other answers to that in terms of EMS reserve. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to close public comment here. I'll give one more, and then we're going to close public comments. You guys decide between the two of you which one wants to respond.
I, I just want clarification for myself. So the legal aspect of it is you're looking at the ARPA contract for this funding to decide whether or not it ties in, ties us to anything?
In broad strokes, yes.
And, and if it doesn't, then we wouldn't pay it back.
If it doesn't tie us, if we are able to take the money without being subject to executive or federal executive orders, then that would mean we would be inclined to take the money. If we are, if we, we bind ourselves to future executive orders by President Biden, then that would be a strong motivation to reject the money.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was.
And we've been resolute with that, with that fact that if it, if we can get proof that it does tie us to a presidential executive order, not just the executive orders within the terms and conditions, then we won't, we'll pay the money back. We'll be done with it. We'll send it back. So. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and move along. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, Nancy. Let's move on to solid waste. Bob Howard.
Morning, Commissioners. Bob Howard, Director of Solid Waste, for the record. Solid Waste is seeking approval to request terms for an interim loan from Columbia Bank to pay for ongoing engineering and construction expenses for the solid waste improvements project. This interim loan will be repaid at the completion of the construction using the USDA Rural Development Loan. Application for this loan is approved by the Board of County Commissioners on June 1st, 2021. Columbia Bank has provided the attached letter of interest for this potential interim loan. This Board of Commissioners item is only a request to move forward with drafting the loan terms. Review and signing of the final loan terms will be a part of a future Commissioner Agenda item. Loan amount is 8.733, $700, 8.733 million, $700. Repayments for this loan will be semi-annual interest only payments at the annual interest of 1.74%.
Okay, yeah, that's $8,733,700.
Too many numbers.
Start getting a few commas in there, and it all gets weird.
That's when I go, when it gets over a million.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information before, so moved to authorize Bonner County Solid Waste Department to allow Columbia Bank to draft final terms for interim loan to be used for engineering and construction costs for the solid waste improvement project.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Doug?
Doug Patterson, for the record. So this is a loan for the solid waste improvements. Normally, there's a process of, of when a government loan is taken out, it's approved in a, in an election.
It was.
It was. And it was. Thank you.
Okay, any other question or comment? And then one, one thing I want to note too is that this is the interest rate that we're getting from USDA. USDA is requiring us to take out a bridge loan, which is the same interest rate. So it's the money we would, it's the same interest rate we would have paid regardless. Dan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. When is the USDA expected to reimburse for that interim loan?
It's at the completion of the project, I think is what he said. Is that what you said?
Yes, once the project is completed.
10 years from now, 15 years from now, I'm not sure which date we're going by.
21 months.
Soon as the work's done.
It's a 21-month term.
So all $8.7 million is going to be spent in the next 21 months? Okay.
We hope. Hope you get it done soon.
Construction loan, it's normal when the city preacher did the sewer and water, the same thing. All entities do this after they pass a bond.
Okay, any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thanks, Bob. Moving on to planning, Milton.
The overturn effect.
Morning, Milton.
So on September 22nd, the board adopted ordinance 648, adding Title 15 development impact fees to Bonner County revised code. In addition to this, the board also signed a resolution 2021-89 adopting the capital improvements plan to the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. So in support of the adoption of the ordinance and the resolution, the planning department is submitting a IGA for the collection and expenditure of development impact fees between the county and Northside Fire District. This contract agreement's been reviewed, reviewed and approved by legal counsel is ready to be signed by the chairman of the board. So planning department's recommending approval of the IGA.
Thanks, Will.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the county and Northside Fire for the collection and expenditure of development impact fees until either the county or Northside Fire District terminates the agreement. I further move to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Doug, I see you leaning forward. Oh, Dan beat you.
Dan Rose, for the record, when you say collection and development of fees that can be, how do you say, suspended or removed by either party, what, can you elaborate on the, the fees in the collections? How that's being done? Is it a tax, a future tax? What, what's the?
That's a tax on every building permit in the Northside Fire District. It's an impact fee. And so every person that comes in and applies for a residential structure or a commercial structure in the Northside Fire District pays, I think it's 780 a building, 785 for a for an impact fee for that structure. And then commercials is rated by square foot.
Yeah, and Northside Fire had this put on the ballot, I think, the last election. And it passed, so. All we're doing is collecting the money for them.
It's actually gone through a two-year process.
Right. Yeah, to do it, yeah, to do a fee like this, you've got to go through this entire process where, I mean, there's a, it's a lengthy and actually very expensive process.
Created a capital improvements plan, and the money can only be spent on that capital improvements plan. And so it's being collected for a specific purpose. And it's yeah, we, we had 120-some-odd building location permits in that district in the last year. And so they ought to be able to raise the money that they planned in their capital improvements over the next five to seven years. If it terminates, if, if the county or the Northside Fire terminate that agreement, then that money goes back to the property owners through a series of, you know, just, it's just all in the contract and in the state statute. It's a pretty complex process. It's taken a lot to put this together.
So just to be clear, we collect the fees and then we remit them out.
Yeah, we send it.
As much like we do with any regular property tax collection, we're just a custodian.
Thank you. Yep. That's correct.
We're just a custodian.
Again, is, is that a fee or is it a flat tax that's applied to new construction properties?
Flat rate, isn't it?
It's a flat rate. Yeah.
Yeah. For everybody that has a new construction.
Anybody that's building from this point forward with, yeah.
Is there new construction, certain size limit, uh, minimum?
It's, it's residential. If it's a residential structure, they're going to pay that 785. So if it's an ADU or an RV dwelling unit or a single family dwelling, if it's a residential structure. And then if it's a commercial structure, I think it's 39 cents a square foot.
Okay. And I just want to be clear, the difference between a fee and a tax. Is it a fee or a tax?
It's an impact fee.
It's a fee. Okay. Okay.
And I think, you know, if you had to choose over, you know, this obviously would impact the normal person that was paying taxes in that area. This is a better way to go because it impacts the people that are coming in and, um, impacting the people that are already there. So it's a, it's a more fair way to go.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Milton. Uh, do we have Dave Shook on here? Jeff, why don't you go ahead and?
Want me to?
Yeah, why don't you do it?
Oh boy, I love this one too. Um, okay. So this is a grant offering which county has sponsored for the airports for the cost of related to operation personnel cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport and debt service payments. The grants require the county to establish a mask policy at the airport. Base covering policies, the sponsor agrees to implement face covering mask policy and to combat the spread of pathogens. This policy must be included as a requirement that all persons should wear a mask in accordance with Centers CDC and Transportation Security TSA requirements as applicable. And at times within public areas, airport property, except for the extent exempted under those requirements. This special condition requires airport sponsor to continue to require masks until it Executive Order 13998 promoting COVID-19 safety in domestic and international travel is no longer effective.
Chairman, based on the information before us, I've moved Bonner County not accept the grant offer in the amount of 22,000 for the Priest River Airport and 32,000 for the Sandpoint Airport.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? So this was ARPA funds and we elected no.
Yeah.
Uh, it was 22,000, 22 and 32, 22 for Priest River and 32%. Remember, uh, it was about two, three months ago, we had a deadline, um, coming up and we had to apply and we said, listen, we're just going to apply. If it turns out being ARPA funds, we're going to deny it. So we're, we're formally just saying, yeah, we're not going to take it.
Terry Bartlett for the record. I think Dave, at one point you said the FAA, because they're involved with the airport and force certain things to happen.
No, what, what we said was there was a call to not take any more money from the federal government, which would include the FAA. And if we decided to no longer get support from the FAA, this is a, this is kind of a, um, elective thing, not like a runway improvements type of thing to keep the airport certified. If we said that we no longer want to do this, we'd have to pay him back 20 plus million. And we'd decertify our, decertify our airport. Couldn't take off or land there. Um, businesses would go out of business. People would be unemployed.
So by refusing this funding, that doesn't affect that at all?
No, this is an elective, more of an elective thing. Yeah. The first trigger, well, there were two triggers. One was ARPA funds, knowing that policy carryover down the line and then two, requiring a mask at the airport. It's like, come on.
Most, most.
We've never required masks here. We won't ever require masks here. We fought with them.
Outlined in that grant. Sandpoint and Priest River don't do it anyway. They don't have ticket sales. They don't have people lining up to get on airlines. So it was airports in general, which the small county airports, they don't have that anyway. So.
So it is a stretch.
Tied to ARPA.
So it is a stretch and it is tied to ARPA, but it is a stretch to think that this is, would really affect our airports. But the fact of the matter is, is if we have to implement and look that and watch over that and try to make sure that somebody's wearing a mask when they go into the airport property, I just don't know that we're, we're capable or, and want to do that. So I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, really with this too, there was no, there was no enforcement mechanism with it. So we could put a sign up and say, it's required. If someone didn't wear a mask, we're not going to, you know, we're not going to take them out and tie them to the runway and let planes land on them. Um, but, um, we just thought it was something we don't want to even wade into. So any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of not accepting this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes to not accept it. Assuming that's going to be a no. We'll leave that blank until I can get clarification. We put, you're an attorney. We chose this option.
Right.
Not this option. So is this a yes vote to this option or is it a no vote to the, for the total option?
Yeah, instead of.
I think it would have been more properly worded as I, I moved to, um, reject.
Reject. Well, we said not accept.
It's, it's, I think it's, your, your intent is clear.
So the answer is yes. Um, yes, we do not want them.
That, that, just leave it blank for now. That, that's really whether or not it's checked yes or no on the bottom is not a legal requirement. Right. So the intent's clear. Um, what that, the bottom part there is just for administrative fees. It's not, there's really no.
Right.
Impact.
Well, I circled the not accept.
Right. And the votes on the record.
Yeah, that would denote that we are not accepting. Okay. Let's move along then to Roden Bridge. Jason. You have something you want us to not accept?
Not this.
Okay.
I want you to accept those. And no, I did not spend any ARPA funds on it.
Thank you, Jason.
Bonner County Roden Bridge requests approval for the attached fiscal year 2021 Annual Roden Bridge Financial Report required by Idaho Code 40-708 to report money received and spent by the Roden Bridge Department during budgetary period for the year. This certification shall be made by the 31st of December each year and published once as a legal notice between January 1st and the 15th, attached as a copy of the proposed legal notice as well. The auditor's, auditor's office assisted with this report and providing the funding source information that we use to put it together. The fiscal year 2021 Annual Road, Street and Financial Report includes all actual funding from local, state and federal sources, along with actual expenditures.
Okay. Thanks, Jason.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information provided, I move to approve the FY 21 Annual Road and Street Financial Report and have the board certify and sign the report administratively.
Second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Doug, you were popping up first. Sorry, I'm ringing.
Thanks. Um, uh, so, so, um, can I get a copy of that report from somebody? Okay.
It's to be published in the papers as well.
I, I understand. Um, but could you give us the big, big dollar for, for what you received and what you spent?
Well, it broke down, the complete amount of money we got was 11 million, 557,000 dollars and some odd cents. 11 million, 557,121 dollars total for the budget.
That's, you spent 11,361, 9396. It's been a little bit less than we brought in.
Yeah, we spent a little bit less than.
Thank you.
Which we carried over.
Yeah, we have retained for future projects. That's, that's carryover.
Maureen Patterson for the record. Is this very different from last year? How does it differ?
No, it's not different at all. This is something that's done every year.
No, no, I mean the amounts, the amounts.
It's real similar.
Yeah, it's pretty similar.
It's probably more because we got a little bit more money.
We got more gas tax money from Idaho.
This next one will probably be bigger.
Mr. Chairman, within that report, can you tell us how much was spent for the purchase of sand?
For what?
It doesn't have sand. It broke out here. Has new construction, reconstruction, routine maintenance, equipment administration. Other includes payments from local governments and total disbursement than the retainage. And no, it doesn't have sand listed in here.
We spent close to half a million dollars in sand, just so you know.
Okay. Any other question or comment?
Apparently that's not announced.
Yeah. Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Jason. Jesse, you're up.
Hey, Jesse.
Good morning. Jesse Webster for the record. Um, I received a request from Selkirk Fire for two annexations, one for Sagal and one for Westside. Um, the first one is for Sagal and it is six, six parcels of real property to be annexed into the Sagal Fire District. The properties are located entirely within Bonner County and within the boundary of this, not within the boundary of the Sagal Fire District, but they're of an appropriate geographic relationship to the fire district. Um, they held a public hearing on November 10th and they submitted their order to us. And so I am asking for you to approve this annexation into the six parcels into the Sagal Fire District.
Great. Thanks, Jesse.
Chairman, based on the information before us, I've moved to approve the order of annexation of six parcels of property located in Bonner County, Idaho into the Sagal Fire District.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes to Jess.
Um, the second one is for Westside and this is 14 parcels. Again, they're all within Bonner County, within the Westside Fire District. Um, and they are again of the appropriate geographical location. They held a public hearing on November 10th and approved the order. And I'm asking that you approve this annexation into the Westside Fire District.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information for us, I move to approve the order of annexation of 14 parcels of property located in Bonner County, Idaho into the Westside Fire District.
Second, Pat.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any question or comment? Dan.
Dan Rose for the record. Um, I missed a few meetings in the last few months and, um, I'm just wondering how many parcels year to date have we annexed for the fire department?
I, I wouldn't, I would, I'd have to go.
Yeah, there was one up in Priest that was annexed or actually one created, um, earlier in the year and I don't recall.
It's been several, um.
Would be less than a hundred, more than a hundred.
In Selkirk, how many have been annexed in the last? Oh, that's true. 2020 and 2019.
Yeah, these all come from the landowners themselves wanting to be annexed. So it's not. Right.
Without being in the fire district. And many people also contract for fire coverage. It's really more economic. It's just better if they're annexed in the district. So we do both. We annex people in and we offer one contract.
Okay.
I also have an annexation that I'm working on for, uh, West Pondry.
Yeah.
Um, we're working together on that one, but it's in process. And then Sam Owen, um, has one, I believe that's going to go on the ballot, uh, this next May.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Jesse. And it is 9:41 and we will go ahead and take a.